In accordance with Governor Charles Baker, March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on UATV Channel 9, government access relative to any and all matters pending in this committee, including but not limited to tonight, Wednesday, June 2nd, 5:30 public hearing, followed by departmental hearings. So with that, I will open up the public hearing for folks to first to talk positively for the budget, and then we will have those folks that want to talk against the budget. Please leave it to a minimum of about three minutes so we can try to get as many folks on and try to keep everything concise and simple and right to the point. So with that, I will open up the public hearing.
You'll take a roll, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. Jen, will you call a roll, please? Thank you.
Counselor Andronico.
What we'll do as we handle this meeting is we'll ask the public to mute themselves unless you want to raise your hand, in which case our...
Counselor, is that Counselor Harris?
Not me. Not me. Don't blame me.
Why don't we try that roll call once again?
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
Nine members. You have a call.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up the public, the public hearing. OK, see John Rotafield. John?
Hold on, I have to unmute him.
How you doing? I feel like horse shack and welcome back, Carter. John Rotafield, 62 Grenwell Road. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm just, you know, I will be less than three minutes, I promise, Chairman McCarthy. I just want to dedicate this to my cat Rasta, who I put down yesterday. She watched so many of these meetings and, you know, she basically agreed with me on most of the things that I'm going to discuss right now. So basically, we just had Cinder McNerdy come on and, you know, tell us about the bond stuff. Well, we just had a $63 million bond, and that bond that went out, there was that $100 million that you guys approved or the people on the city councilor. That's my other cat jumping on the keyboard. I still do have two cats, which is cool. That $100 million that was approved and the $40 million that was approved on 5-4, they've already borrowed on that. So obviously, they have to keep borrowing money. And we just added 22 more million of long-term debt, which is $4 million from City Park Improvements, $6 million from the Sterling Middle School, $5 million from Kincaid Park, and $6 million from the water mains. That was, you know, they all have some hundred thousands after them. But we spent $1,100,000 bonded like crazy. I myself, I'm overwhelmed with credit. I have, I think, 14 or 15 credit cards, and they're reducing my credit for me, my limits. I can't keep getting more. I wish I could keep getting more because that's how I survived the COVID, but it's not working good anymore. Thank God for the unemployment that the state is doing. So my thing would be, what I was shocked with when I looked at the reports, I was excited because I'm one of the few people that get excited when I see bond offering reports at the public, you know, at Emmer, this place where I get my reports from. And what I was shocked at, they didn't have the 2020 reports in there. It was still the 2019 Powers and Sullivan report. So according to the 2019 fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2019, the ending net position of Quincy College Enterprise Fund decreased $8.6 million. The operating expenses exceeded operating revenues due to the college recognizing $1.8 million of unbudgeted expenses related to the net pension and net OPEV liabilities. Additionally, $8.8 million of the decrease in operating revenues related to the tuition as changes in the degree program and overall course operations took place during the second half of fiscal year 2019. Now, that's in the report. We don't know what happened year ending 2020, and 2021 is just about over. So my, you know, when you go back and you look at not approving the $475 million part, that's what I don't approve of. I approve of everything else on the budget. But we're due to put $37 million in there this year. That's a promise that we made, a schedule. And the schedule that we made, Parack even wanted us to be more aggressive with that, and we weren't. So when Mr. Mason, who's very smart, I enjoy talking to him and stuff, he knows a lot, when he was talking, he basically saying like, this is refinancing. It is refinancing. We're refinancing like a 15 into a 30. So everyone who's watching, just remember, instead of having the pension fund paid off in 2037, we're going to now be paying the pension fund till like 2051, 2052. What I asked the city council is, maybe this pension bond thing is a good idea, but let's do it next year, okay? We don't have to do it this year. Borrowing $475 million, you should think about that for almost a couple of years. So to do it this quickly is not prudent. So I wish you all, you only need a small majority of you guys, of the council people, to stay together, and that's all I ask. I'm not on the council. I can't do it. But I urge you, and I back anyone who does, you know, stand up for the taxpayers. You have to make, you know, all the savings that you're saving from the bond were spent. So there aren't no savings. So the only way you can help the taxpayers is just, you know, make a lean budget come in by not approving the $475 million bond issue. Other than that, I think everyone's doing a great job. It's hard being a city councilor, and I wish everyone well. I think everyone in the city, Quincy actually is a great city, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thanks, John. The chair recognizes Bill Zamzow. Bill?
Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not the greatest on Zoom. Good evening, councilors. Bill Zamzow, 356 Washington Street. I got to tell you, as for the administration's proposed FY '22 budget book, it is only fair and proper to note that it sets a new low, a new low for errors, misstatements, omissions, and the like. This is especially troubling is except for a few budget line items, the rest of the line items asks are the same as last year's. Such also causes one to wonder why the administration was two weeks late in presenting the FY '22 budget book. Sorry, I was working in the yard all day, and I'm poached. For an opening example, in this year's version of the invariably mind-numbing narrative, narratives that preface the administration's proposed budgets, the administration notes that the city's credit rating is a strong double A plus with a stable outlet, only to include Standard and Poor's December credit report, which cut the outlook to negative in the budget book's appendices. That and S&amp;P cut the credit rating by a full grade just last week. While the administration will surely say that the cut is just a temporary one fueled by COVID, such is not exactly how the report reads. Even so, the administration is doggedly pressing forward with its proposal to issue a half a billion dollars of debt so as to endeavor interest rate arbitrage. Surely hundreds of millions more of debt to follow, as well as spend more money than in the soon-to-be-ending fiscal year, along with the adding of a number of new employees. Granted, Quincy received a $46 million federal COVID relief grant, but this money is supposed to last a couple of years. Already, however, Mayor Koch has announced that he plans to use $10 million towards buying the Monroe Building, even after the city council expressed its disinterest in funding the buying of this property, much less the likely $150 million or more in additional costs, all costs duly included, needed to build new space for city hall operations, as well as provide a new venue for Quincy College. So what, apparently, that the current city hall could be rebuilt and increased in size for less than half the cost, and at a time when the college has been losing both students and money hand over fist for years, as well as that its viability is open to question, and as is the case for many fourth and fifth-tier colleges? Further troubling is the mayor's proposal to bring the college back into the annual budget from its longstanding independent and self-funding enterprise fund status, and so cover millions in the college's bills that it has not been able to cover. So what, apparently, that this would impose increased cost upon local taxpayers to subsidize the education of 81% of the college students who are not locals, as well as so open the doors for all manner of challenges of the proposal? And then there is the rejiggering of the butt, the budget as regards spending in the Quincy College Redevelopment Center. Last year, the mayor sought to move the redevelopment district into enterprise fund status, and so take its revenues and activities out of the budget. The council turned down this ask, but did insist that the redevelopment district's annual financial data be separately noted within the budget. Instead, the administration scattered the district's budgetary line items and other parts of the budget, and so making it all but impossible to follow the money. Then again, such has long been pretty much the case with the whole of budgets during the Koch era. And then there is the administration's pulling, putting a gun on the council, to the council's head by presenting a budget predicated upon your approval of the mayor's pension obligation bond proposal, a plan which would double the time it would take to cover the nut to pay for fully funding of the city's woeful, if not catastrophically underfunded, employee pension fund. To this and other valid concerns, I mailed you all a review of the myriad of problems with the mayor's POV proposal, given that the chair of the Finance Committee inexplicably refused to hold a public hearing on the mayor's ask to roughly double the city's outstanding debt load via what also entails a major policy change, via a plan which ultimately has more in common with the subprime mortgage-backed derivatives that cratered the economy a dozen years ago than I fear many of you realize. While in my memo, I conceded that while a POV does offer a vehicle to bail out the city's woeful and bottom-of-the-statewide-rankings pension fund, the administration's assumed close, strong-arming a view to approve what is actually a highly, and thus risky, ask is troubling. The plan also includes a rolling over the city's pension obligation in a familiar fashion, similar to transferring a credit card balance over to a new credit card, given the motivation of a promotion featuring a low to no interest rate for the first six months or maybe a year, so giving rise to a one-time $21 million cut in pension funding costs in FY '22, which...
Bill, you're going to wrap it up?
I'm going to do my best, Dave, but there are a lot of problems, and I didn't cause them.
Well, you got about 30 seconds.
Well, I'll do the best I can, but you gave Rotafield four. In any event, allow me to return. In turn, this makes it possible to mask a light $21 million increase in spending in other areas of the budget. Put another way, were it not for this one-time savings of a most creative sort, the administration's spending ask for FY '22 would be upwards of $27 million instead of the butt $6 million or so, and thus an over $10 million, 10% delta increase from last year's budget. That, and finally, do be sure to note that a corresponding increase in the FY 2022 property taxes might be imposed if the various external approvals needed to go with a POV plan, the ask is approved, that is, by the council, are not secured by December when the DOR certifies the local property tax breaks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Bill. With that, we're right at 5:45. I don't see any of the hands raised or anybody waving at me. So I'm going to go right into our meetings that will, pretty much as everybody knows, going to go right in order in regards to department. There's no changes. The only thing I want to bring up right now is under that retirement and pensions section with Eric Mason, that'll be on hold until we solve that in the next week or so. So with that, I'll turn it over to... The chair recognizes Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Procedurally, we're not voting on anything tonight or tomorrow, correct?
No, I mean, unless we're going to, unless someone's going to make a cut tonight, well, you know, things like that, Counselor.
Well, typically, how these hearings go is that people present, and we take a vote on each section. So this isn't a final budget yet.
No.
So are we just hearing people tonight, and are they coming back in case we want to make cuts? This isn't an accurate depiction.
This is what we do every year.
Well, not when there's pending legislation that would dramatically affect this budget.
Well, that retirement and pension section is going to be another subcommittee meeting that I'm going to try to put in on June 14th, that open Monday, for us to discuss that again, and then have a vote on that, one way or the other, on the last meeting of the year, along with the budget.
And I would suggest that we postpone tonight and tomorrow, then, before we have that meeting. This is, this is a waste of everyone's time. Because we need to know, we need to, we need to have a discussion on that 475 and see if it's going to go through, because that's going to dramatically affect any decision in the budget. And, you know, the mayor will probably have to go back and pencil if it doesn't go through. You know, I think the assumptions here are a little too, a little too heavy for us to make any decisions on any section of the budget, you know, department people who are going to present tonight. I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to them, and we wouldn't want them to have to come back and do the whole thing again.
Well, I'm still going to go forward tonight, Counselor, with presentations from everyone in regards to their sections to get through some of this, and I want councilors to ask questions in regards to their sections. Now, the 475 question comes up. If that changes things, you know, we'll have another meeting. We'll have another couple of meetings if we have to bring people back.
Well, this is really out of fairness to the mayor, just in case that doesn't work, then what are we going to do with the budget? So I would suggest we table this tonight for the sake of the 475 discussion so that we can understand the full ramifications of that decision for this budget for FY '22.
Well, I still want to go forward with the, with the folks that are here tonight, Counselor, and at least hear them out.
But I'm just saying, are you, so then are they going to all come back again so that we can make suggested potential cuts, knowing one way or another what happens with 475?
Well, we're going to have to see what happens with 475. If that's the case, we'll have them all back.
So then why don't we get the 475 meeting tomorrow, and, you know, we come back and do the budget next week? That's a request. I mean, last week, you guys were talking about putting votes on hold and all this, so I hope you would, you know, honor my request.
Is that a motion? I second it.
Mr. Walker, just for clarification with this, the 475, I know we talked about having it on the 14th of June.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a point of order? I don't mean to cut you off, can I?
Hang on a sec, Counselor, and I'll come right back to you. But, and I don't, and I understand what Counselor Kane's saying. But my thought process was that the 475 was either up or down and was ready to go back in. Either way, it got voted in back into the budget. Now, I don't know how that trickle-down effect affects every other department in regards to the 475 not happening.
It could be very dramatic. It could be very dramatic, and I wouldn't want to make decisions on this budget as presented if something's going to go a way that you might not assume.
You can do both, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we have a procedure, and I don't know if it's in a rule or just historical, but we have a procedure that any individual councilor can put a hold on any individual budget. So if what Counselor Kane and Counselor Mahoney are saying is they're not comfortable voting on underlying budget numbers until the 475 pension bond is decided, we could still have a discussion. This is typically what we do if someone just has one question that needs to get an answer. We hold the budget. We can still go through the process of asking questions about the line items and then not take a vote on that bottom-line number on each budget, if that's what those councilors so choose to do.
Well, and then everyone will come back again. This is what we have. So then everyone would just have to come again. So I'm just, I'm trying to save the trouble of duplicating time and effort here. We've got wonderful department heads who are trying to make presentations, but this isn't an accurate depiction of the budget that we can make a decision on any of their departments. So it's just, I would think that people would be all for this. So.
Could I add? Could I jump in?
Go ahead, Mrs. Mahoney.
I agree with Counselor Kane, and one of the reasons why I agree with this is that we haven't fully had the vetted out of the 475, whether it gets voted up or down. If it gets voted up, we're back to right where we are tonight, and we have everybody back, and we have the discussions. If we vote it down, then the administration has to come back with a different budget for us. And we didn't, and basically what Counselor Kane, if I'm wrong, I believe what you're saying is we could go through this next two nights, get a lot of work done, find out that it doesn't go the way we wanted to, and we're all back to the same spot, and a lot of people's time and energy was wasted. And that's not really where we, and the public, too. So there's a process that should be happening here, and the 475 should play out first. Once that's played out, and once we know where we're going with that, then you can go into your budget process. But to do it any other way is suggesting that we are approving the $475 million. It's, because we don't know what that impact will be. If it doesn't get approved, it could impact every department of the city. And I just think it's a waste of the department's time. It's a waste of all of the councilor's time. And what we should be focused on is the 475. I think combining the two is a very dangerous thing to do, and what we're here. And we have, on June 14th, you said you're going to have a pension meeting, the 475 pension obligation bond meeting, and we have until July 1st to pass this budget. So I think tonight's time is we should be tabling it, and we should be moving forward to find out how we're going to move forward with the 475. If it passes, we'll be back right here tonight where we are in two weeks.
Okay, I'm just looking at the calendar.
Counselor McCarthy, this is Bill Harris. You know, we all got all this information. We knew this before this evening. Everybody knows what's going on over the next couple of weeks. We have events that are going on in awards. We set aside the times and schedules. I mean, some people work, some people don't work. All I know is that, you know, this is, this is, does not make sense that we don't go through at least hearing the folks. And if, if the, of course, if the pension, pension doesn't work out, that, that makes total sense. I mean, that, it makes total sense that the fact that, okay, that's, that part of the, that part of the budget is separate, like every single department. And, you know, I'm very not happy about, about the fact that we all got emails from every department. We've all gotten all the information, and yet, and yet, this is, this, whatever is going on tonight, I'm not going to judge it or judge anybody, but I think this is, it's really not acceptable for the fact that we're all of a sudden going to just say, you know, tonight and tomorrow night isn't going to happen. I mean, everybody knows what we have on Monday and Tuesday night next week, and all the things that we have during the next and upcoming weeks ahead as we try to, you know, close the budget season up instead of, you know, again, it should be something where we're working together to make sure the right thing is done instead of being fast and not, you know, I understand that part, not being fast and, and not using, you know, common sense. But these departments that we're going through, you know, we can actually get through the process. And, I mean, as a council, we've taken days off from work in order to, you know, make sure the process was, was, you know, in years past, to make sure that the process, we took a whole day off, I remember, one, one year. And, and we just sat it, and we banged it up. We banged it out, and, but as we, we banged out the budget over, and we actually, I think we came back, we either, I think we maybe came back the next day or, or one evening. But all I can say is that there are folks that are prepared, people that are, people that have worked hard on their budgets, that are going to be waiting just to hear, you know, budgets that are, from what I've seen, are all even lined from years past, that we can get, get through the process, and then we'll deal with the pension situation. I think I used up my five minutes there. So, so thank you. Thank you, Chairman McCarthy.
Thanks, Counselor. Well, I know a motion was made by Counselor Kane and seconded by Counselor...
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make any motion, Mr. Chair. You know, I just, I just want to outline. No, no, but Counselor... No, I know, but Mr. Chair, very quickly, I just want to outline.
Very quickly, hang on a sec. Mrs. Mahoney was seconding the motion.
I didn't make any motion. I don't even think a motion needs to be made on this. But I just want to outline very quickly the double standard that's being set on the city council, okay? So when all of a sudden, for an issue, I think I brought up a couple of weeks about Quincy College, I wanted to take a vote. You guys wanted to put it on hold. You got your wish, okay? The DEI thing last summer, I asked to put that on hold. I didn't get my wish. So how do we work here? Why don't we figure that out? This is ridiculous. I'm asking for a request to put this on hold because you're wasting everyone's time, because we haven't taken a vote yet on the 475, which would dramatically affect this budget.
Yeah, Counselor, I'm not denying it or anything. We're talking about it. You're going off the rail real early. Let us talk about it. Maybe we will postpone it. You're making a lot of good points.
Well, don't insinuate, Mr. Harris, that we're not prepared to hear these things or that we've put the department heads in this position because we did not, because we did not.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, everybody.
I didn't say that, Counselor. I was talking about, you know, hey, I will go all day Saturday, so let's, let's schedule so we can...
So why don't we do this?
I'll give up Sunday. I have no problem with that.
Counselor, Counselor, why don't we do...
For the record, I have a problem with something.
Counselors, why don't we, why don't we put it on hold tonight? Right? We will come back with some really quick dates, so everybody keep their schedules open as much as they can for the 475 conversation, and then we'll bring everybody back because it sounds like nobody wants to get into it tonight without that 475 answered. Is that good, Counselor Kane?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your respect.
Thank you. So with that, we will, I guess, table tonight, and we will reconvene in a subcommittee meeting, hopefully next week on the 475. We'll make sure we...
Excuse me, Counselor McCarthy, why can't we meet earlier this week or even tomorrow night?
Well, we'll have to just spill. I'll have to go out.
Go through the weekend. I mean, you know...
Bill, let me go out and, and just make sure everybody is available. We still got some time, and we can talk about the 475 and get it all built into this so then everybody can ask their questions to numbers that aren't going to flip-flop at all over the next few weeks. So.
Harris, you better stop trying to ruin my weekend.
Okay, I will go out with an email and pick a couple of dates, and I know we got graduations and things on Monday and Tuesday, but we want to make sure we do this as fast as we can so we can get back to this and get to department heads. And I apologize, department heads. I know you guys did a lot of work. You guys were prepared to go tonight. I talked to a lot of you guys, but things happen, I guess. So with that, I'll adjourn the subcommittee meeting for tonight and probably put tomorrow on hold also, and get back to everybody with a couple of dates on the 475 meeting. That sound okay? I guess so. Okay. With that, I adjourn the meeting at 6:01 PM. Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Good night.